Okay, thank you for bringing us for this Wednesday, May twenty third. Meeting now saw the meeting with orders with.
Attorney Page.
Yeah.
Trustee Robinson.
Here.
Supervising Hewitt.
Here.
Assessor Trevor.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Thank you, and I will go with the budget of weekends. My. The name. You two. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Then we'll go in our. Well, with a sorry, public comment, and we can start with the in-person public comments. If there's any.
Okay.
Well, start.
Yes, sir.
Name is John B. Baker. I attended your budgetary meeting last Wednesday. And I watched with some dismay at the lack of a process for even outlining how much this board is willing to improve services through funding. That inability to state the goal in this regard, followed up with an attempt at line by line deletion from the proposed, but only reinforced the appearance that the current board has not heard the Lisle Township voter in their demand for both support of seven oh eight board and sustainability issues and initiatives. Indeed, what I heard on Wednesday was board members sounding like for the first time asking what the seven oh eight board required noise for. It's just six days ago, asking about this important function that voters voted sixty to forty percent to enable. And tonight already, you have to decide something about that. And then I heard board members tentatively scrap solar power funding when this is financially advantageous at this time. How can this be when there is a surplus of money to cover these and other items like the senior services I spoke of last week? This is all on behalf of voters and the taxpayers who want these services and features. Thank you.
But thank you, sir. Any other public comments?
Yeah, my name is Jerry Gallois. Yeah, I'm from the village of Lisle. And I'd like to say that when you meet to approve this twenty twenty three budget tonight, please keep in mind that a budget is a moral document. It reflects your values and your priorities. You know that your values determine what benefits you're going to choose to bring or not to bring to the people of Lisle Township. And you'll be judged by what you do for the people, by the people. And I don't know that people in Lisle Township are getting what they're paying for. I know there's money going in that's not being spent. I know that I know that there's talk about about giving a tax rebate to people. If I get a tax rebate, if you cut my tax in half, it'll be like fifteen bucks. You'll save me a year. Big whippy dude. I want the people of Lisle Township to have the services that they deserve. And and you know, whether I benefit directly from those services, I may not ever benefit them. But there are people in the township who need those services. And there's been cuts to the SNAP benefits, and it's my understanding that you don't want to spend three grand to to pay for some some software. Three grand is nothing for software for a program to make your food pantry more efficient. I I this is this is it's astounding. I can't believe it. Uh. Other townships are providing are providing loans to their mental health boards so that they can get off the ground running. Uh, and and you can't decide whether or not you want to do this. I I it's beyond words. Uh. There was there was a ballot initiative at the last ballot. I'm gonna it's very short. I'm gonna read it to you. Should the state of Illinois, their agents, agencies and political divisions? And that's us. And this was only in Lisle Township, this particular thing, as far as I know. Uh, should should the these political subdivisions set up a zero to negative carbon emissions priority date of one one thirty to address climate action now and set the same priority date in commercial regulation? One by twenty one percent. Now, you might not think that that it's important that that hit the goals stated in this particular resolution, but this is what the people of the township voted for. And you have the opportunity to put on solid panels and please, goddamn it, do it. Pardon my French. And yeah, I'm I'm sorry, but I'm a little emotional about this. I I read nine years of minutes. I ran for clerk in twenty seventeen. I read nine years of minutes in the run up to that. And and there was there was a a pretty good sized capital fund that was that was drained. Uh, the money was shifted to other other priorities in order to provide a tax tax cut in twenty thirteen. I didn't even know there was a tax cut, or it was in twenty thirteen, it was probably twenty twelve. Uh, there was an election in twenty thirteen. Cut was probably in twenty twelve. And it cut it cut the property taxes in half for one cycle. And then the next cycle, what did they do? They more than doubled the property taxes. Whoopie do. And but they knew they knew that the the building had problems. And the plan was was to either to either upgrade the building, you know, rehab it or to or to replace it.
Time served.
Never get done. And thank you. And good luck.
Okay. Is there any other?
Just my my statement is very, very personal. It's simply that it's been a lifetime of being. And then I met the most marvelous woman in the world. I lost her three years ago. And taught me that money had purpose. And capital today, it sent tuition to my son, who was in school to become a physician's assistant. Money has to have purpose, has to have a reason. Not just to collect. If we can make this a kinder, more humane, more supportive township, our money is well spent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other personal comments? Okay, and I, your Dana came, and I think she may have maybe having some connectivity issues, but she had just briefly come on. Um, I don't see any other people online. And then we have some public comments submitted through. Through here, there was quite a bit of them, so I give them the click, follow it through.
Okay, the first one is from Jeremiah Stephan. Wow, Township Board, thank you for putting together a comprehensive budget and for making it available in advance of Knight's meeting. I am happy to see that there are significant increases to the Township General Assistance Fund. These are very much needed. Please consider spending more on the townships of the townships reserves in these areas. Many of our neighbors need help to food grant and utility assistance. And I see no reason why our township won't use some of its considerable cash reserves. These needs. Please also contribute in the township's cash reserves for more capital improvements. I would love to see solar panels on the top of all township buildings along with battery backups in the garages. In my experience, a solar installation would likely pay for itself in eight to ten years and would go a long way towards the township reducing its carbon footprint, something the voters mandated the township do in the twenty twenty two election. Also, I was very surprised to see that the township will pay a hundred and five thousand dollars in rent for the assessors of this space, given the current market for office space. I hope the board will look for ways to reduce this cost in the future. This seems excessively high. Lastly, please consider allocating some money to host the annual meeting in a better space. The Illinois Township Act at sixty ILCS one dash thirty dash fifteen allows you to choose a convenient place in the township for our meeting. I would suggest a local auditorium or hotel conference room. Not only would this be a better overall, oh, sorry about that, overall better experience for residents. I have trouble finding parking and hearing the speakers at this year's meeting, but it also might encourage more of our neighbors to come and participate. Thank you all for everything we do for our community. The next one is from Kurt Eli on me. I apologize if I killed that name. I would like to see our taxes invested in Lisle Township for the good of our citizen street citizen street. But you for upgrading services in the township offices rather than getting a tiny rebate. That's it. That's it. Okay, next one is Donna Marie Preperjow. I have paid taxes for Lisle Township services for forty five years. I have always thought that the needs of homeowners in unincorporated areas such as leaf removal and mosquito abatement were giving more consideration than human services for the needy. Please consider your duty to spend tax dollars wisely to include salaries, infrastructure, and supplies in order to provide human sources. You need to look at the big picture and prepare for the future. Say yes to working more closely with suburban pooping. Say yes to solar energy. Then there's Robert Sacks. It's time for Lisle Township to live up to its mission to provide services to vulnerable populations such as the food insecure seniors and the disabled. Passing an austerity budget makes no sense ever. But especially now when it has the resources to address needs that have been overlooked throughout the time that Republicans ran township government. Next one, that was by Robert Sacks. Christine Cusack, I am disappointed that the proposed budget does not provide an expansion of much needed services such as surviving services for the homeless. In addition, there seems to be no effort to move toward reducing carbon emissions which the township voted on and passed by twenty percentage points. Also, there doesn't seem to be any plans to replace the building which was torn down. I will remember on election day. Uh, and I'll shifle by. Hi, there was a non-viting ballot question that was on one of the recent ballots in regards to achieving net carbon emissions by twenty thirty, and many Lisle Township voters were in favor of this goal. Thank you.
Okay, it sounds like that's the end of public comment in person. I'm doing it to your thing now, and that was the public comments through the contact. The next piece is the certification of the bill with the invoice of service in London. And this is from last month, and there's two pieces here to it. You all got emails, I'm sure, about this.
No.
Thanks.
This is from last month? Yes, it was withheld because there was some, we weren't sure whether the billion had been duplicated. And your Dana, the due diligence and nature that these are separate though. And your Dana, do you have anything to add for this?
I do not. I yeah, unless there's some questions.
Correct two different months.
So this this is this is April.
This is March. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then I I didn't receive them. Did you guys receive?
I have to. I have the electronic phone, but I don't think I can get mine. It's not actually mail. We got to click on the home computer. And then we can't do it on the phone now.
I guess the question is, your Dana, were there any double months on to this? Any double checks for bills?
So there um, the the payment from what what is outstanding right now is March and April. The March bill of both of those bills were around nine thousand dollars. Everything else has been paid.
Oh, no other months have
or extended.
A double payment. That is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If we if we receive a check that's not for the amount due, we don't we don't cash it. We return it. So um, the only outstanding months right now is is March and April. Um, April would have just been set, you know, two weeks ago. So I don't even know that we had it at the last board meeting.
No, we didn't.
There was one question that came up about your attendance at the annual meeting. Did you bill for any events?
I did. I billed an hour for it.
Were you invited?
Um, I was invited by both the supervisor and clerk. And I did. I wasn't there as an elector. I didn't register as an elector and I didn't vote.
I did not invite you. Attorney Wasaki, I apologize. And I think Supervisor Hewitt is sort of the last meeting that she I know I asked you if you were going to be there.
You you inquired if I was going to be there. I wrote back and said, I'm planning on it. You said, good. When I got there, I checked in with you to see what assistance you needed. You stated that you needed assistance, making sure that at seven o'clock, the doors were closed, no other electors. You know, we're only people in line, so that's what I did.
Supervisor, I I'm sorry, excuse me. Attorney Wasaki, I I did not do that because I had it completely handled. You asked me if you wanted, if I wanted you to sit anywhere, and I said, no. Uh, yeah, and you asked if I get any questions, and I said, no. You know, that that was it.
That conversation took place after the, after I checked to make sure there was no one waiting in line at seven o'clock.
But I didn't ask for that. I I just want to be clear that I didn't, you know, I didn't incur this charge. I didn't ask for it to be there. I got, you know, I I just, yes, because of what you were saying in the email, I said, I just asked, are you going to be there?
Okay, it sounds like there has been some miscommunication as to having her there. And I think in the future, we're being extremely clear about whether we need help in an effort to make sure that our finances and our expenses are in line. So.
I'd like to add one thing. Attorney Wasaki, you indicated that Supervisor Hewitt asked you to be there. Do you know when she contacted you? And do you have it in an email? Was it a phone call? How did you do it? Because the last meeting that we were at, Supervisor Hewitt stated unequivocally that she did not invite you.
Right now, I gotta be honest. Right now, I'm in my car. I'm driving back from my six thirty meeting. Um, so I don't have access to the email right now, so I need to focus on the road. Um, but it was a discussion that we had starting in, I don't know, the end of February, mid-February. And I didn't have any change in instructions. I know that we were emailing about the town meeting up until, you know, a couple of days before.
Okay, so you're you're indicating, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, and maybe if you could just copy that email that you sent or the between between you and the supervisor, would that be okay?
Well, I could, but yeah, this is you're you're here talking about my bill, and now you want me to search my emails to find. You know, I I I guess I'm I'm getting mixed messages. So is it the board's wish that I search for their emails indicating that I was, you know, instructed to attend the town meeting or?
No, no, I think it was, I think it was a good investment of time you were there. I'm not sure why there's confusion as to why you were there. I would like to make a motion to approve these invoices.
On second. Uh, thank you, Trustee Robinson and Trustee Page. Any more discussion about this? Okay, then I will call vote.
But Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Page?
Yes.
Supervising Hewitt.
Yes. Okay. Then moving on to the next piece, which is the reimbursement of Stephen Hummel. This is from March. I'm not sure why this is still hanging out here. I thought we had approved this. I thought so too, and I was told by the accountant later that we had not. Okay. So I thought this was, we had plenty of discussion on this.
Is this is this for the the supplies?
Right, supplies for the food pantry and for the lighting.
Improvements.
Yes, okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Page and Trustee Robinson. Any more discussion?
Could I see those? I I'm not even sure. Yes.
I think we went through them.
We didn't go through the receipts, not that I am going to know about.
No, they were gone through. We went through the receipts. We just during the audit, yeah.
Okay, this was the, this is the thousand dollars for the light bulbs, right?
Yes.
This was approved. This was.
Yes, we're just getting making sure that this check gets out and done. The next piece on here is.
Sorry.
Well, let's. Sorry, roll cover.
Uh, Trustee Page?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Supervising Hewitt.
Yes. The next piece is the MetLife piece, and there's a note from the accountant later.
So this is for the half of the MetLife.
Yes.
For the highway.
Right.
Okay. And if it doesn't get paid, coverage lapses.
Right. To first. Sure that this gets paid.
Wait, this was for the second page that didn't get input?
Yes.
Into.
A MetLife. And we're making sure that this gets paid, and so it's going to be next day mailed tomorrow.
Make a motion to pay this invoice.
I'll second. Thank you, Trustee Robinson and Trustee Page. Any more discussion?
Isn't that part of the normal payroll function?
It should have been. It wasn't. Again, I got a note.
Because I never pulled it. I don't.
Payroll or accounting? Because it's for benefits, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's part of benefits.
Yes.
I guess, yeah.
Yeah, because I never see that. I never see that bill or the Nationwide bill or the I am more. So I don't know why.
It was apparently an error done in the finance department, and they're making sure that it's being paid. So it's that's why it's happening. I just got a note about it from the accountant on Friday to add it to the agenda. Um, okay, then moving on to the.
Think we need a roll call.
Sorry, we'll cover with that one.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Page?
Yes.
Supervising Hewitt.
Yes. All right, then, moving on to discussion and possible um, action on resolution number twenty three oh two two engaging Taft and Eagle Services. And it's, as we, I noted, there was twenty three oh two two was the that's the annual committee. So the uh, the actual resolution is twenty three twenty three. It's that number.
Right.
The exact same everything.
So in the Finance Committee meeting last week, we did have a discussion with Patricia Beatty of Taft, and I would like to, my consensus from the board was that they were comfortable that she could provide the services. We need to resolve this issue. I would like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty three dash oh two three to engage Taft, Stan Knight and Hollister for legal services within a stipulation that the bill not exceed fifteen thousand dollars. That was an agreement we had from Patrice, the attorney Patricia Beatty.
Second, Trustee Robinson and Trustee Page. Any more discussion?
Can I try to make a suggestion? I think it's a wonderful idea. But before you start getting involved with the attorney, I know you're going to have a new public conference come on board, and I think it might be beneficial to have them look at the setup for QuickBooks on what is deducted where it's invested with respect to the benefits. Because when I went through and tried to understand this is maybe, and I granted, I had practiced accounting for a long time, but um, I can see individuals' gross income from deduction from gross income was the voluntary IRM that we all know about. And that's deducted from social security. Which is right if it was just the normal IRM. Deductions after social after social security earnings is the normal IRM deductions, and I don't think that's in the proper place. And then you have another thing with Met, I mean, with Nationwide, which is another program that's offering to the township for retirement. So I think it would be real easy for the accountant to come in and look at how that QuickBooks process is set up. Because they would be familiar with one with QuickBooks, and two, the tax law, what should go in, how. They can identify the problem more quickly, and then it can be quantified and then talked. Just a suggestion.
I appreciate the thought. I I want to put this behind this.
Yeah.
Very much so.
And I feel that that if if that turns out, thank you for the thought. I I think that the attorney has experience in this space, has dealt with similar issues with other jurisdictions. I'm very comfortable engaging with her to help this move forward and get.
Yeah, there's no question about that. I think she was quite like the, because they have to come in and get money with everything.
Okay. Appreciate the thought. Thank you.
Okay, and so we had discussion and the other discussion. And then I will cover the poets.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Page?
Yes.
Supervising Hewitt.
Yes. Okay, then, um, discussion, the next piece is on agenda item eight. It's discussion and possible action on twenty three twenty four. Not coming through with one behind with. Fidget. Um, and it's the exact same, just the proper number. And a few other by my name, this is about Trustee Robinson is going through this stuff.
Well, I was just going to make a motion to resolution to approve resolution two two oh two three dash oh two four to engage sick it for our annual audit. All indications, they were a proposal that we received that is in line with what we had budgeted for that service. Everything I've been led to believe is that we need to act quickly to engage an audit firm because of the time requirements to meet our our commitments for filing. So I would like to make a motion to pass this resolution.
I'll second. Thank you, Trustee Robinson and Trustee Page. Any discussion?
Do you want to put a party on this now to exceed?
I think they does. It's in the budget.
It's in the proposal, twenty thousand. Well.
It's in the proposal, the the contract that we're signing. It's in their proposal, that the contract that we're signing.
Has a, has an upper limit. The one with the attorney did not have a limit. It just had an hourly rate.
Well, that makes sense. Um, okay, then uh, do we wanna, uh, we'll call vote for it, so it's been Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Okay, then the section and uh, also the twenty twenty-four budget from our township, uh, but um, Trustee Robinson begin.
No, I appreciate um, we had a finance committee meeting, appreciate your gentleman's participation and your comments. Talking about services, we we have increased the transit service in the township this year. That's approximately three hundred thousand dollars. Um, that is when we've added to the budget for new services. We've hired a senior services director. Part of their charter is to look at what the services are around in the area and figure out where there might be gaps. The other part of that is we're doing an NIU study, which is gonna tell us in in a broader sense what the needs of the community are, and we're gonna factor that in the planning for what we plan to deliver this year as well. So there are efforts that are ongoing. We've made improvements in the number of the services, transit being the one that we focused on this year. We we've invested in the software. We've got at least one bus, I don't know if we've got more, we've got two drivers onboard. Really, that's to meet the need of a lot of our um, the folks that need transit services, a lot of them are seniors. Whether and they can do with scheduled appointment, travel to appointments, as well as for their um, getting to other services they may have, whether it be shopping or other things like that. So we have made investments. Um, the pantry soft software is still an option. Uh, we we have enough for food that one, one of the things that the the other trustees were concerned about is it it wasn't just a software decision, it was how do we partner with West Suburban Food Pantry? And it wasn't clear what that was gonna look like. And we have also just hired a new senior, we've a director for the food pantry who has to have get a chance to get his feet under him and get aware of what's being done today. What his pool of volunteers are, what the services are, and again, this NIU study is gonna help drive some of that. So we have heard you, we we are making changes um and delivering services. This is the budget that we are trying to set for the year to, and this actually is the budget from like that we have to have um, uh, made available to the county. Um, I do plan to have another um finance committee meeting. We got to a point where we we uh effectively uh, looked at what the investment requirement asks were of the township and the township office and personnel in the office. And we can, to your point, whoever made the point, there were approximately four hundred and eight seventy-nine thousand dollars that were taken out of that, a hundred and seventy thousand was for the solar panels. The point that one of the other trustees made, and I thought it was valid, was is this even an appropriate location for solar panels, given the orientation? Um, and are we gonna get enough sunlight that's actually gonna be effective here? So part of that could also be a feasibility study. We're not precluding that that might be a future option that we can look at. Again, a lot of these things were being asked to approve and fund, haven't really been uh uh validated with with studies, underlying studies to see if they're feasible, and if they're gonna be realistic in uh, in the climate that we've got. Partly, it's the fiscal climate as well. The 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 budget that we looked at a week ago was a million dollars over what the levy is gonna be. And I know there's options for grants and potentially for some revenue generating opportunities. The township has approximately between four point three and four point nine million. I think we still need to get an odd of the number of surplus. If we spend a million dollars in excess this year and next year and the year after that, that surplus is gone in four years. And effectively, there's not a lot of new services that we're talking about here in this budget. I wish there were more. You know, we've invested in new employees, and I think part of it is they have to get their feet under them, they have to get working together as a group. And they have to start developing these programs that you're all asking for. I I agree with the with the sentiments that you brought to the table. I think we are creating an opportunity for the township supervisor in the township staff to demonstrate that they can deliver and package these services, and then we'll look at what future additional investments are. So that's really what we looked at. The the um budget that's in front of us today to vote on that we need to put in an ordinance document and get filed very shortly is based on the consensus that we had from the finance committee when we went through it at a budget line item. Um, that's sort of the way that I've always done budgets, is you look at a budget line by budget line, and you look at, is this a reasonable investment? I understand that there's a surplus, but as I said, if we look at the numbers, we are going to be taking approximately what was my last number, six hundred thousand dollars um, out of the um close to seven hundred thousand dollars out of the township reserve fund. And then we need to fund the G and A reserve fund as well. So that that surplus is gonna be eaten up pretty quickly. Um, until we can get other sources of revenue, uh, whether it be grants or whether it be revenue generating programs like transit or like passport. So this is the budget that was uh amended and and forwarded and and from a consensus point of view agreed on with the members of the finance committee last week. So I would like to go forward this proposed budget. It is three point um, three nine. Let me find my number here. Three million, three hundred sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifteen, which is for both G and A and for the township funds. The budget lines are all laid out in here. And and there is still an open question that was raised earlier in your comment section. How are we going to fund the um fundamental health board? Um, and it wasn't clear, uh, I think we we're still looking for guidance as to whether we can loan. Whether we do wanna grant, or we we do wanna just uh allocate part of this budget, or whether we wanna make a loan. I think we were looking for guidance as to what a funding mechanism could be. It wasn't clear what our options were as we set this budget. And I know that uh, the attorney Wasaki had actually called and uh, asked the question of of the county about what options we had for funding the mental health board until eleven comes through. And I know she had, she didn't get a definitive answer back yet. Um, I think we have to do a little bit more research to find a way to do that. Unless someone has an idea as to, uh, and unless anyone's done with the research as to what our options are to fund that um initially.
Attorney Wasaki, did you come up with any more answers to that research that you had started?
You're very faint, very faint.
Not really hearing you, um, Attorney Wasaki.
Still very faint.
I'm not sure why we're not hearing you. You were fine before. We're still not hearing you, uh. Okay, we really just couldn't hear you. I'm gonna call you, uh, because it's not working to hear you.
I'm sorry, you you, I know you were more focused on taking notes last time. Is there any I missed from the discussion?
Not at all. No, you covered it all perfectly.
Were any of these numbers changed?
Yes.
The last meeting?
Yes.
So there were done, cause I've seen a couple that I didn't think for the same, but I knew going to
I can walk through that.
Is that this my Adam?
Sort of. I think she's still connected to me.
Well, she's not very.
How you doing, Dan? Hello, okay, so I guess. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I I'm sorry, I didn't realize the Zoom wasn't working. Um, is there, um I I don't, did you not hear me at all?
No.
Okay, okay, all right, then let me start over. I apologize for that. Um, so um, I did, um you know, as as um, Trustee Robinson mentioned, I reached out to his attorney, um, but declined to answer the question. Um, I did talk to um, several other township um attorneys who are dealing with this issue. Um, some of them, it it sounded like everyone had a variety of ways of handling this, um, if they handled it at all. Um, one of the things that keeps coming up though is that, um, it doesn't seem like the um, community mental health um board is a separate taxing entity from the township. Um, the township is authorized to levy a certain amount under the um, you know, under the act on behalf of the mental health board. Um, this would make it not, you know, not a separate taxing body. It would be the same taxing body, and therefore the community mental health board would just be a line item on your budget. Um, rather than have a separate, um, you know, do a separate budget and preparations and a separate levy. Um, so i- if it's just a line item, then you can just add it to your budget. It's not um a big deal. Um, we could do an IGA, but I don't know that that's um necessary. Um, given that, you know, like this, they're the same taxing body, then it doesn't, that doesn't make any sense to do an IGA.
So that means we collect that, their levy money?
You're Dana, I think we're, I think you're mistaken on that. I'm pretty sure you're mistaken on that, um in that I'm positive, and I I know that I just um explained the whole um, potential change in the law, which did not happen. Um, but the board, our board is going to approve the levy, which then is is almost exactly like the road districts levy where it is a totally different um body, they, the, just like highway, um commissioner Young um, assesses the levy and has his own, that's exactly what happens with the mental health board. So that I'm I'm sure after talking to other supervisors and in the assessor here is agreeing with me on this topic, um, I'm pretty sure on this topic. And I at the same time, I did talk to the other supervisors, and they are doing exactly what you said, a variety of different things. Um, including um, some of the townships just giving twenty-five, fifty thousand to their mental health board in in place of, for example, a counselor. Um, that's where they're putting their mental health spending.
Okay.
So I'm just saying that that's one of the options of things that we can do is do a a portion of this going to them directly as well. Or at least that's
Yeah, so my, um, wait, just a second, Diane, I'm gonna hang up the phone so I don't get feedback, now that the Zoom's working. Um, so, yeah, I think that adding it as a line item on your budget is is fine with me. If you want a more um, you know, even if we do an IGA, you'll need a line item um to cover that, that amount. So, um that, you know, it it needs to be included in the budget.
And they'd ask for a budget of approximately seventy thousand dollars?
Yes.
And when is their levy gonna come?
And I can, but their levy is passed at the same time our levies passed, exact same time. So in September I'd like us to start talking about their levy. Um, and our levy, and so if we look in our seven oh eight mental health board right on their board meetings in their packet, they have, and on the, on their mental health home. They have their budget, their draft budget. That's what they're looking to spend, um, and again, what they're asking for is a loan.
So, sorry, so how, how would we show, we would show a line item expense of seventy-nine thousand dollars with an expectation that it would be reimbursed to us?
Yes, and it would, we would have to create an intergovernmental loan or an intergovernmental agreement with them um, in order to do this. That's what was recommended.
Okay.
What I would like to recommend is an intergovernmental agreement for this loan. And they're not gonna, again, they're not going to get any money until June of twenty twenty-four. So they have zero funds to do anything until June of twenty twenty-four.
So can the loan span across a fiscal year?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Cash basis, yeah. All right. Okay, thank you, um. All right. Any thoughts? I mean, you're, I know you're obviously very invested in.
Yeah, I I would have no problem whatsoever, having enough money whatsoever.
Okay. So we need to have a budget line item.
And then they don't start getting their funding in seven to June next year, right? So this is literally all they will have to work on for like the next year.
Next. Close to twelve, fourteen months, right?
Yeah.
Do you, I, I get it. They, you know, they need money and um you want to see what that, you're maybe you're more privy to it than
I'm the liaison to the seven oh eight, yeah.
Right, so what they want for seventy thousand?
Again, it's on our, it's been up here for
I apologize.
Some time, so if you look under seven oh eight mental health board.
Oh, I I haven't looked under seven oh eight, cause I didn't think that was, um, I could have, cause it's there, I just
So it's there. It's still there, and it's been up for a few weeks now.
So I didn't, I didn't realize that this is what they are asking of us. Because I've never heard the ask, I've just heard that they would be asking us.
So as they're, every month, they've been working on, uh, this was passed in March. Um, by March thirtieth, they had to have their budget proposed and, and
They're gonna pay at least thirteen thousand dollars in addition, which should reach you.
Um, the idea is that they're gonna pay an admin, and I'm not entirely sure what their expectations are. They haven't signed the contract yet of what they're, and whom they're looking for. But right now, it's with Lisa.
I think they're envisioning some form of cost sharing.
You think that the ten thousand is he coming back to the township and your time to be split between the township and the middle?
I think that was my understanding, but I'm at some And I'm I'm guessing too, I'm guessing too, based on seeing it up there. Um, all right.
They're gonna need an admin of some sorts.
So we'll just leave it, okay, admin. I don't, all right, I think we should add in the full amount, seventy-nine, three?
They need seventy-five, nine.
Seventy-five, nine.
And they need tomorrow. Click, all of us, they need tomorrow at the, uh, they're at the library, Belia Library, if you wanna or anybody who is interested, they need on the fourth Wednesday of the month.
All right, so we're gonna need to find out from the accountant what budget line this will be.
We had previously a mental health budget line item, so we can do that. And the other piece, um, I guess, from a legal perspective yeah, is, and I guess this is a clarification, or sorry, we needed you had proposed and had um, um, trustee Robinson had proposed the um, proposal of the twenty twenty-fourth budget. Is there a second trustee page?
I'll second.
Okay, and then we're at discussion right now. Your Dana, are any of these line items, uh, after they're being proposed, are any of them able to be changed? Or is this exactly what must be passed in uh, next month?
No, this is, this is just a draft. You don't even have to approve it by motion tonight. I mean, that's fine. We just needed um, a draft prepared so that when the notice goes out to the Daily Herald, um that there's a draft available, so if anyone asks to see the draft, the hearing will be, um, you know, we picked the date at the end of June, so that's when the hearing will be. And the budget can be changed um, right up until the the final vote.
Okay, and then I just wanna make sure, trustee Robinson, um, the date of the hearing is gonna be June, I just wanna make sure we're getting the everything, was it the twenty-eighth, or what day did we, I thought it was, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page.
Let me check you, I thought we had the date up on the website too. But we, I thought we said the twenty-seventh. I had it on, I had it on June twenty-seventh.
That's fine, um, that works. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, then. Um, from a discussion perspective, I think that um, a lot of the options that were that aren't being considered are one-time costs. Um, in that some of them like the uh, solar is something I think we really need to reassess. Um, not having long-term investments in general assistance, I think is a piece that we're having to um, make up essentially, um, as fast as we can, when I was looking at Um, make up essentially, um, as fast as we can, when I was looking at other townships budgets. Um, frankly, we're not out of line, uh, looking at some of our transportation costs at, um. At our administrative costs, we're saving quite a lot of money with mosquitoes. I'm really hoping that we're with our mosquito abatement, I'm hoping that we have a, a easy time of it this cycle. Um, knock on wood, but I, I think that there's quite a few places where we're not investing. Whether it's in not putting programs together with the homeless or not having any management software systems. Um, that's not, not having any of the volunteer, the case management software. Um, it doesn't look like we have money right now set aside for pantry stuff, so that needs to be a different type of conversation. Um. So that's where, um, I guess I, I would again, help us to think about the long-term. Investments of some of these pieces that I think we're missing. Okay, then, um, a roll call, please, third pollits.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Paige?
Yes. Yes. Okay, then it is, um, going to then be posted tomorrow. Um, thank you, third pollits, send me any questions or feedback.
Um, I will just look, if, if you're doing it on the twenty-seventh, it needs to be, um. Uh, within the, I mean, on the thirtieth day or before would be fine.
Um, it has to be by the, the thirtieth day, so I would do it a couple of days before, just to make sure, since we have a couple of days. So.
Hey, and then, uh, one, one time, correct?
I'm sorry, say again?
Just posting it one time, correct?
Yeah, it, it just needs to be one time, um, before, you know, thirty days before, and I think I. Maybe, did I send you the language or?
Yes.
Okay, okay, sorry, I can't even remember, but, um, so, so it's, um, you know, it's, it's a one-time posting.
Sorry, just to clarify, I need to change that one mental health line, I need to add, so whatever you have in front of you, I need to change.
Got it.
Add that seventy-five, nine in.
Perfect.
It's under budget line forty-one, eighty-one.
So if you were sending to everybody, that's. But the, uh, publishing, well, uh, we'll need to post that, but in the paper.
You just put it, you put a blur.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, I just wanna make sure these numbers are right, thank you.
Is it forty-one, eighty?
Forty-one, eighty-one.
Okay.
Eighty-one. I, I had this forty-one, eighty as well, what you think?
Forty-one, eighty, there's council meetings.
Council meeting, right?
And then forty-one, eighty-one should read mental health.
Cause it was. It reads D E I audit and consulting, that's what, that's what it was last year. Okay, so we should, no, no, you're asking the right question, we'll apologize, so we should change that.
Yeah, because this was printed March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
All right, so it's.
Okay.
Okay, I will update the, uh, I will update the sheet to see forty-one, eighty-one is mental health with a budget of seventy-five, nine.
Okay, um, then, um. Uh, number eleven.
Yeah.
Very sorry, um, number ten is discussion impassive, impactful action on resolving elected official compensation issues. Um. From my perspective of the overcompensation, um, you all have a letter from Linda, with the spreadsheet from. Uh.
You shouldn't be using the.
We agreed with your numbers, sir, and we agreed with your numbers.
Well, then she should say, they're her, they're not mine, she shouldn't be putting my numbers in there.
I agree, Highway Commissioner Young.
She should provide all that detail and not say using highway. I think that's it.
So I didn't get a spreadsheet from, um, a company leader, um, and yours had the. Numbers that I agreed with and I, again, was trying to get to a resolution. Of, um, of the overpayment and in the end, as you can see, I've been. I've been, uh, not being paid for several, uh, pay cycles. And the, with the, uh, check that was given, uh, in April. We have a date of June seventh of having everything being paid back, um, through payroll. Any questions on this?
No, I'm just pleased it's resolved.
Yes.
I will make a motion to, um, on behalf of. The supervisor's payment, make a motion to accept the recommendations of the accountant, accepted by the supervisor. To resolve this issue.
A second. We can't really do that because, uh, we don't really, well.
Sorry.
We, we didn't have that on, we don't need the motion, we, this was a discussion of resolving it.
Okay.
I don't believe that we needed the motions, but there's also the, um, underpayment of the assessor. That we need to make sure that we're in agreement about the numbers.
I've read my, uh, review of the numbers that she, uh, brought forth. And I sent the information to her and I had not heard back, but, uh, I'm, I'm giving her time to go look at that. Okay, so. Concerned at this particular point, I brought some things to her attention and bring her to get back. And I did get back to her in time that you requested and.
She told me that, so thank you for that, I appreciate everyone's efforts on this, everyone's efforts, just wanna get this resolved. So, it's, so was your recommendation that we table this until the next full board meeting?
No, I guess my recommendation is, is that we've talked it through, where, eh, this is, I don't believe needing attorney Waisaki. I don't believe this needed a resolution or a motion, I believe this needed conclusion. Um, and I, I think we've agreed to the numbers that we agreed to. And everything is being done and we're just wanting to make sure that this has been, that everyone is being updated about the conversations. And the, and it's thoroughly out in the public that we've remedied the issues. Is that correct, your Dana? We don't need a.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't think this needs board action, but I mean, if the board wants to take action, just approving the numbers, um, that, that's fine as well. Um, I, I don't know that it's necessary, um, and then I had one other comment, um, John, just an F Y, uh, 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 assessor Trowbridge, just a F Y I. Um, accountantator, um, reached out to me to, um, inquire, she wanted to make sure that. The interests that you had included did not, um. Did not constitute additional compensation that would have been prohibited as an elected official during your term of office. And I have not had an opportunity to take a look at that, um, I, I honestly don't know off the top of my head, so. Um, so that's, the holdup may, may not be solely on, you know, at her feet, it's, it's, um, likely me.
Maybe, I, maybe I can help you along a little bit?
Oh, I would appreciate it, yeah.
Well, if we're just gonna look in practicality, if I had, if I had been paid the correct amount of money, the exact amount of money that is. Established by resolution and the allocations would have been put in exactly the way that they were established. That interest would be allocated, I'm not getting, I'm not gaining a penny out of this, I'm only getting what's due to me. By the fact that the compensation wasn't put in entirely managed.
Yeah, I understand that, it just, um, because this has to do with reimbursement for car expenses. It's not the same as a, as receiving, um, you know, this, this, this is a reimbursement cost. And I just wanna make sure that there's not, I, I, I don't wanna put you or anyone else in a position where. Um, you know, there's a, there's an issue because you've received some additional compensation that, um, wasn't, you know, contemplated.
I, I think exception of the fact that you're suggesting there's additional compensation, that is not the case. The allocation of the, the, the allocation that was put for is thirty-two thousand dollars, one, one thirty-two, and there's six involved in that. You cannot say with conviction that the six was, was subtracted out, was exactly six thousand. So the, the fact of the matter remains that up until this point and for years. Um, including with I M R F, that six thousand was, because that's been part of my compensation for a number of years and we have not had an increase on it. That part has gone in and has been, has been allocated that way for the better part of a decade. So to suggest that that's additional compensation, I think except, I take exception to.
Okay, but I, I'm, I'm using the, the terminology that's used in the, um, you know, the, the act that requires public officials not to. Um, you know, that their compensation not be changed, um, during their, their term of office. So, that's the, that's what I meant by it, is in reference to the act. I didn't mean to offend anyone, I just wanted to double-check and make sure that. This would comply with the act and there wouldn't be any issue with it down the road. If the board's instructions are, just leave it, that, that's fine, I can do that as well.
Okay, so it does sound like we need to have, uh, at the next meeting, make sure that everything is documented in. In further to re, make sure that we're in complete agreement, so this is really done. Um, so, um, we can have that on the next meeting. As making sure that we're resolving the assessor Trowbridge's, um, concerns and. Accountantators and, uh, attorney Waisaki's concerned that we're not increasing any salary. Okay, then, um, moving on to a, agenda item eleven. Um. Lisa Rose is the bookkeeper at Lyle Township affected immediately. Any other discussion on this?
No, they only all mentioned, this was a resolution that came out, a recommendation that came out of the Personnel Committee, meeting last week, so that's why it's on. Well, that's why it's part of the full board day, it was a recommendation, so. No, no further discussion.
Okay.
Are, are you?
I don't think we need to vote on this, do we? I don't believe we do, she is the bookkeeper. Okay, um, report of elected officers, officials, um, in agenda item twelve, um, Highway Commissioner Young.
Your attorney, he was spending, he was investigating about his compensation and interest, which was thirty-nine bucks. It's gonna cost you two hundred and fifty bucks, we're talking about thirty-nine. And he doesn't care, he's the one exposed. Just a question.
Is there anything else, Highway Commissioner Young?
No.
Assessor Trowbridge. Um, trustee Paige?
Nothing for me.
There's, I know I've seen a lot going on in the garden, it looks, um.
I actually haven't been back there because I've been kinda busy doing this stuff, but. If anybody has time, we are looking for volunteers, um, I was back there before the meeting tonight and I have to, I almost burst into tears when I saw the trellises and. We, uh, we had, um. We, the wooden planters that we had were kinda rotting away, so we purchased, um, like hard-sided, uh, composite and metal. Um, we worked, oh, maybe a month ago, putting, thank you for all the work. We moved all the logs into and, and we're. It was a lot of work.
Yeah.
The, it, it, the garden is coming along, the weather's not cooperating, but it's coming along and I expect next month, it's gonna be stunning, but I'll be here tomorrow morning burning weeds. So, you see smoke up in the air, don't worry.
Thank you, trustee Page, uh, trustee Robinson.
No, nothing, thank you.
Um, third pollits? Um, I wanna remind everyone, um, on the documents side of the website. Um, so if you go onto, uh, documents and you go to. Um, transportation service application for all of those senior services, senior citizens here, please fill this out. Um, what this does is it creates the ability for you to do ride to page and at the same time, our Lyle Township transportation system. There, once you fill it out, you're enrolled in both at the exact same time. Ride to page is a twenty-four, seven system, it's for seniors over sixty-five and the disabled community. And our buses are going live tomorrow. Um, and so we're starting out with a variety of, um, of educational visits to. This senior, the, um, senior living communities, whether they're, um. The variety of different, uh, types of senior service living facilities that we have here. Um, we also have been, Gerald has been, um, going to, and our drivers will help spread the, these applications. What, how you can schedule a ride is you call our office. Um, you call, um, Gerald or Alexia and all of this is on the website. Um, so if you look at the transportation department, it's, um. Under services, it's going to be a really great, um. Service, in my opinion. Um, so then, next, the other piece that I wanna remind people of is the. Um, is the expansion, or we're talking about how to expand our. Um, whether it's our food pantry in particular, to an evening hour, we have gotten the employee, enough employees. That wish to do this, so we're wanting to discuss how exactly we can do this. Um, it would also be, um, making sure that we have, essentially, we're, we're making sure that there's enough hours for our. The, the programs that we're currently running. On June thirteenth, we're planning a program with the Conservation Foundation. Um, it's something that the public and the, um, trustees were inviting to discuss. Um, how we move beyond no-mo-may, um, with regards to sustainable plants. So the cus, the Conservation Foundation, um, we're planning to do this at the, um, Lyle Library. We're getting the details worked out, but again, that's gonna be June thirteenth. Um, with the Lyle Library, one of the pieces to note inside of Lyle Township is that we're discussing. And we've been talking about jurisdictional issues with regards to our policy of. Of weeds and of, um, of the maintenance therein, uh, in the unincorporated areas. Um, and lawn maintenance, so in the past, um, the township has sent. Um, staff to take pictures and record the height of lawns. Um, one man's lawn is another person's pollinator, um, and the, we. And I'm proposing that we're thinking about this as a policy in the future, that we decide whether we're going to enforce or whether we're not. Attorney Waisaki, uh, looked into this legally, um, apparently, there's three really overlapping jurisdictions on this. And it's our choice as to whether we choose to enforce this. The county can choose to enforce this as well as homeowners associations. Um, if we're being forced to, to enforce this, that means that we're gonna be, again, sending staff out to take pictures. To then, um, do the, to, um, schedule the mowings and then to enforce leans on people's offices. If they haven't done this. Um, it has in the past been very. Um, what I'd say is a lot of neighbors ta- talking about other neighbors and it's very, it can be very. Um, petty, um, to enforce. So, um, that's something that we also have to decide is, is from a policy perspective, do we wish to do this? So that's also why, um, where the Conservation Foundation is coming in to help educate people about the topic.
So the people right now, because I know we have a call and, um. They had told me that you had said that we're no longer doing it. Um, and they're, um, because there are neighbors that are, you know, with extremely long, yeah. Um, it, it's not a petty back and forth, it's extremely, uh, long. So are we not enforcing or doing the policy now?
So there's, again, there's three jurisdictions.
I get what you're saying, but, but we have always been under, we've done it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we are, are we enforcing a new policy already? Or is the board going to vote on this and look at it in the future?
I'm saying that the board needs to have this discussion and I didn't know that I needed this to be a, a full board discussion. But I've been informed that this needs to be a full board discussion. And so we're needing to discuss what exactly and whom exactly would be doing this enforcement. And the cost then associated with this, because that then, we would be enforcing leans. And all of that is a lot of, um. Again, it gets to be a cost that we have to decide whether it's worth it in the Prairie State when we live in.
Sorry, just bring me up to speed, so I've heard no-mo-may. Historically. Historically, we have not participated, the township town is not participating. It's required people to keep the lawns mowed. Is that correct?
That's incorrect.
That's incorrect or that is incorrect?
Incorrect. Yeah, the uh Bill Green, he was in as administrative, you know, he was administrative assistant to supervisor. He also did the books, but he also did the the um. The grass, he'd go out, take pictures, send letters, and then if they didn't, they they uh if they didn't comply, then he would schedule a grass cutting, pay in. Grass cutters and then the properties, he did that all in his job.
Yes.
So we did, that was a service that.
That was that was done, yes.
Yes, correct.
Okay, and that was all through the stuff, through the the entire s- season, this grass, the lawns grow.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and the question is, I again, I know there are some jurisdictions that have gone to no more May. We as the township, I think the question was, is the township. Decided that we're not going to be enforcing. I guess uh any kind of grass restrictions in May.
So and and currently, because again, we I was given instruction, I I believe that this was a policy that could be decided. Um, I didn't know that I needed to have the full board approval, but we are again, when Bill left, I needed to decide, okay, who would be doing that again? Did I think that 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 those allocation of hours that that needed to be reallocated? I didn't believe that it did. Because I, well, A, we're going through winter, um, so it wasn't a time when we really had to. Deal with it as much. Um, and again, there's frankly, a whole movement of people that don't do that. Um, including, and this is where this is not just a decision of, okay, that. This is a bigger question, and that's why I'm making sure that we have the information that we need to make this decision. Um, currently as. Because it is May and because again, we've essentially been um. By default, not doing um uh adhering to a no mo may, or at least not. Um. We haven't allocated personnel to do this. If you all want to. Change that policy, then we need to have that discussion and personnel need to be changed to do that. At the last conversation I had, um personnel weren't interested in doing that as well. Um. And so again, we as a board, and I believe that this is um. Again, in in the issue when we live in the Prairie State.
So this is only for the month of May or is it for the entire growing season?
We need to discuss this. This is where the at the next meeting, I'm sure there's gonna be more of a discussion about this, and that's where in this beginning of the, that's where I'm. Starting the conversation, making sure that it's going to be a further conversation. Yes, we've had a number of calls. Um, and basically, we need to decide whose jurisdiction do we wish it to be? And as uh Attorney Reisaki has mentioned. The um or as I asked her to do some research. It is overlapping jurisdictions, and you have a homeowners association that can have policies. You and they can then enforce it. You have the county that has policies and can then enforce it. This is then a cost that we're incurring without having, there's no like. Cost back for the hours that are gonna take and the personnel that are gonna be going out taking those pictures.
I I actually have a unique opinion on this because I am, I would support the no mo may. I I I think that's a good thing, um, but. I live. I don't have a homeowners association, so we don't have anybody in my neighborhood who. Who will police that, who will tell people to mow their lawns when they get out of control. I have a. The home directly behind mine has been sighted repeatedly by the city because he will not mow. And his grass will get to be nearly four feet tall, and I'm not exaggerating that because I have a forty eight inch fence and it's right up there. And that creates its own environment of problems, you know, critters come in, I our dogs have picked up ticks and. So I. I understand what you're saying, um, but I I am actually converting my front lawn right now from lawn to pollinators, but it's not. A weed garden, and I know what you mean. One person's garden is the weed to another person. But there's a special thing about people who don't maintain their lawns. There's a difference between the lawn that's going purposely for conservative, you know, for like. Uh, for the environment, and there's another one where people just don't mow, and. I think that we need to to mow. We need to continue on is the way we are for those. Properties who are not maintaining, and that is is gonna maintain a lawn, but you cannot have. Three, four feet of of grass or. Invasive weeds or something, you know, the. I don't know, I wouldn't support that.
Just just so we're clear, um, there are different levels of enforcement, um, which is something that we can consider as well. Um, you know, we're not. It it's our discretion how. How much we enforce because it is a policy decision because there's there there's money involved. I mean, it it costs money to enforce, so it costs money to go out and. Mow people's lawns and do the, you know, the lean process in order to get repaid. That's expensive. What we could do is work on a complaint based system of, you know, when a neighbor calls and says, hey, this lawn is really long. Is there something you can do? We send out a notice to, you know, we we go check it out, send out a notice to the property owner. And follow up that way. Um, you know, there there's there's different ways we could handle it so that it's not as costly. I guess there's a middle ground would be my point is that you 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 have some discretion here about how. Um, you know, it about steps you can take to provide um enforcement without. Having to go through an expensive lien um process.
Sorry, so would uh are there some parts of the township that the city of Lyle would take responsibility for?
So this is. This is just for unincorporated because the city is responsible for. Um, for what's in its jurisdiction, so they do their own code code enforcement. Um, I I mean, the unincorporated areas would be enforced by um the county as well. Um, of course, I'm I'm not sure how well the county really. Does lawn care enforcement, but. Um, yeah.
That's the question.
Township has the authority to do it as well.
Is essentially, who the county has a bigger budget for all of this. They have staff that actually will mow this. And so there's I there's also the whole issue of jurisdiction. Should the county be doing this? Because it's also their overlapping jurisdiction. Um, so that's the beginning of this question, and I um I know that this is gonna be a longer conversation. Um, and so I just wanted to start the conversation, so at the next meeting that there's more input on this. Um, and. Also, a part of this is became because of the expenses of the enforcement. Um, we were, there's it what tends to be the biggest uh the biggest violators of this are landlords that are not here. Um, that are not maintaining a property. And so we'll have the repeat offenders that are those landlords that trying to get them then after. The lien has been put. All of the um pieces therein. Take a lot of extra effort. So if we're gonna do that, we just need to also understand that that. That it it's gonna take personnel time, effort and. Organization to do that.
Maybe this is something you could be going with what. Attorney Wasaki said that that you could, because the city of Naperville notifies. They don't just come and say, cut your grass, and we're gonna bill you. You're notified repeatedly and. Perhaps something like that.
That's what we have.
Partnered up with.
And we had that. That's how it always was.
Like a county.
With you.
No. So.
You called the, you called an outside contractor.
Okay. So then here's the the piece where it gets stuck is that, okay, who that the the outside contractor mows. And then who pays for it? We pay for it, and then we put a lien on their house, and then collecting that lien is what we're again, we get stuck. And so we've had all these liens that we were never collecting a lot of times the payments. So in the end, who's really paying for it? We are. So this was uh essentially became a cost issue of, okay. We're gonna be sinking this money, just let's know about it.
So for next month, could we have kind of the list of uh what the financial impact is?
Yes.
Other, I'm not sure, I am. Uh, knowing. I may be wrong, but any homeowners associations within the unincorporated township area?
No.
Can't think of them.
Yeah, there's.
Uh, stable runs.
Is that a?
Country hill.
Yeah, but I goes.
Yeah.
Uh, hold on.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so so I apologize for that. I. Didn't think of those, and then. The Meadows isn't really a full on um um association.
No.
Um, for that purpose. Um, the the other question, though, is for the people who really have called repeatedly for relief from the township. Um, can we go back and help them at this point? Or are we just not like the one, the one gentleman has been dealing with it since September?
And so I've had several calls with him and I, he also has other issues, so I'm I'm in contact with him in particular.
So are we helping him then?
Yes.
We're just, so we'll go and take care of the lawn?
Um, okay, so that that's a much more detailed situation. That's where, again. Letters need to be sent. There's, he's got a compounded issue with. A neighbor with trash.
garbage, right.
Um, that the sheriff were was called about that, and so he's been in contact with the sheriff, moving that effort along. Um, so that's again, one of the landlord issues. Um, that I was talking about. There tends to be a few landlords that we repeatedly continuously have problems. And in the end, we tend to pay for this, and we we haven't gotten money back.
Until they sell.
Until they sell or try to sell, but that's sometimes years in advance.
So so what are we doing with the people who have called right now, that?
We there's. Yes, and we've been, we've been, I've. Called three of them several times um in helping to get, whether it's jurisdictional issues worked out. I have a list of of whom we need to discuss, and again, this is gonna be um discussed at our next meeting.
I know, but this gentleman for one said that he called the township at the top, the township said. That we are not enforcing it any longer.
And that was before I understood that we needed to have a full policy discussion and make this a board approved piece of of.
Okay, cuz that was last week. So and I'm not trying to be a jerk. I just, these people are calling for relief. And they're expecting it, and we've changed the policy that we've had for many years. And uh and they're looking for us to help.
So, Clerk Paulitz, I've explained several times that I am in contact with these people.
What are we doing?
Again, we are discussing the policy, so we can't.
We have a policy that you took away. Yeah, uh, you're you're a latterly, so I so we want to discuss with the board next month or whatever, what the next. Don't gamble me, cuz I I really.
We have these great rules, and we can start with.
Okay, I will start. So so should I have him? Cuz I get these calls too.
And I I just said that I'm gonna call him back and let him know that we are discussing this policy. Um, and that our board is now going to, at our next meeting, have a whole discussion about. Whether we're going to be doing whatever we're doing with regards to enforcing or not enforcing um mowing. You should.
I'm wondering if the trustees, yeah, I'm wondering if the trustees could direct supervisor. Until you get such a point that you can make a determination of what to do, what was in place should be continued.
I was just gonna suggest that for, and you're getting calls from this person.
And other people too.
And nothing, we have not changed anything, so I I don't see any reason why you can't send somebody out there to provide this resonant with your need.
Okay, um. So.
What would the relief be? Cutting the neighbor's lawn?
No, we that that's not what we do, and here's the thing is that we start by escalating and sending them out letters.
Okay.
And so we have to document the where they're at in the whole. Process of where of of not having their mo- lawn mowed, we have to start escalating it with letters as we've done. So if you want us to start doing that, we can start doing that. Is there um? But again, we don't have, nobody has been assigned to do this. Um.
So assign someone.
But it was a policy before, right? You haven't sent out any letters yet?
We are again, still.
Send out any letters, yes.
No, we are, we have not.
Just that.
Mm hmm.
I guess the other, the other part of this, and I'm, we're making this sound like this is a big deal. This is something that Bill did. In conjunction with all the other things that he was doing. This is not, it this is not a a a higher. Situation, it's a. Uh, he gets a telephone call, he fires off a letter, and the letter doesn't come in a certain particular time, he then goes back out and goes to the next step. And then all the way up till to filing a filing a lien, which we will eventually get compensated for. So it's, I I. I'm sorry to to, if if we had previously, we had three or four people that were doing this, I'd say this is something that requires a lot of attention. But we we had four people in this, in this office. And one of the things that they were doing was taking care of this. We got. Fourteen now? Thirteen?
Yeah.
And we don't have enough people to do, I'm.
Yep, I appreciate the point, so. Please, let's, if we have complaints, let's address them, right? Let's get a letter out and let's address them. So let's, if that requires that we have to follow the policy we had before. Please have someone send a letter out be before the next meeting, so.
So then you're asking for staff to be diverted at least at this time of the year. It's gonna be at least. Four or five hours a week. I'm just saying that this is what you're asking for.
Take that. Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and I think let's 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 take it up with the next uh. Personal, personal committee, what what people are responsible for what? It's gotta be someone's responsibility to deal with complaints.
For one. Issues, okay. Um. We will then be sending them out to um be investigating the lawn complaints.
Thank you.
Um, great, moving on to uh old business. And the main old business is the discussion of pantry soft software.
Yeah, so my my recollection is no one was actually, I think people were in favor of the pantry soft software. What they weren't convinced in is what that meant from our relationship with West Suburban Food Pantry. And and so I I don't think anyone had a particular concern with the software. It was a thousand dollar investment. That that wasn't it, it's. What, how are we structuring the food pantry? What what is the proposed hybrid operation of? Of of what there, what West Bourbon's gonna bring, what we're gonna bring, what our new director's gonna bring. I I think there was just some, I so I would suggest. Maybe at the next meeting that you have your new director come and talk about what his vision is and how West Suburban fits into that. I think that's what the trustees wanted to hear. That was my assessment is from the last, from the last meeting.
Okay, so in the budget, just so we're clear, it's not in the.
Yeah, I left a thousand dollars in.
It's not a thousand dollars, so it's a thousand for the meaning that after the discussion with um. West Suburban, we cannot do the cheaper option. This is not an option right now.
Okay.
Um, the five hundred and the one thousand, so this option does not do what we would need to have done. So if, to be super clear, that's not an option anymore. This um first option is the only one that would allow us to have a digital interface. That would allow us to order food. So that's the vision is we cannot order any food until we get this program. So. There is no virtual, there's no ability to work with West Suburban without this program. This is the link, the software that would allow us to get free food.
So what's that number?
So what that number is, is the number right here. It's the one time total of a thousand dollars. With two thousand one hundred and forty five as the recurring total.
Recurring meaning every year?
Yes.
That we would be billed twenty one forty five for this?
Yes.
Okay.
And what that would allow us to do is get free food. That would allow us to get more free food than the one month of it being bought.
Okay, I'll add another twenty one forty five to the. Uh, budget for software.
So that's, it's. The one time annual fee of one thousand plus two thousand one hundred and fifty. Forty five for that first.
So. What what you're saying with putting that in there is that you're okay with doing that without knowing yet?
No, no, I'm saying that it's in the budget, but it hasn't been approved yet. That's what I'm saying. I'll put it.
Okay.
It's a budget.
But your thought is to make sure you know what's going on.
I want all the trustees to be comfortable with the direction, yeah.
Okay.
So it's it's budgeted, but a lot of.
Got it.
So you're budgeting wire, so I'm just trying to understand the timing of. The food pantry throwing virtual because that's the piece that is waiting for. Is getting the pantry soft. So we've been waiting for the last two months to get this direction.
Could you have? So, agenda item, next full board meeting, what is the vision of the food pantry? And how, with the new director, how is it gonna work with West Suburban Food, West Suburban?
Okay, so Suzanne gave the presentation.
I wanna hear. I wanna hear from us what our vision is, I know.
Right.
I know what she said, I wanna know how we're gonna take advantage of the services they offer.
Okay, so if Jordan comes and presents to you all, that's what you all are looking for?
I, I think.
June fourteenth meeting.
I think it's to look at how the whole thing interfaces together. What portion is the West Suburban Food Pantry portion with the virtual, how that will work? What is of the existing, what will that look like? Uh, you know, what, you know, is this a half and half, are we expecting, are we still expecting to have the same amount uh that we always had of food in the food pantry? Or are we, is the thought to lean that away and grow the West Suburban, what's the vision of this?
So, the vision is to, you'll hear on June fourteenth, but the idea is that we can't go or have any other information without having pantry shop. We, we do not have the ability to go virtual, we do not have the ability to gather the information.
Got it.
And so the ability is to give you all apples and apples, two days of hybrid of, meaning the way that we've been doing things in two days with the virtual, and this will alleviate a whole lot of supply issues. Um, this will alleviate a whole lot of uh personnel issues. Um, but we need to change what we're doing because this, we did, the need is growing at a higher rate than our ability to change any other aspect.
Yeah.
Okay, so June fourteenth, we'll have a presentation from Jordan, and we'll make sure that Suzanne is here that will answer any other questions, so that you all can hear from West Suburban and Jordan at the same time.
And and I think another part of it, thank you, another part of it was, what impact is this gonna have on the users of the food pantry?
This is expanding all of their options and expanding equity. And that is, that the only thing that can happen is a good positive change and.
Well, they have to be computers, pension computer savvy, so, well, how are we gonna deal with those? How are we gonna deal with people, if there's a pickup, the schedule hours for pickup, so I think those were some of the questions that came up when Suzanne presented last thing. So, just how are we gonna accommodate our current customers and hopefully our current users and maybe expanded use as well?
So just like Ecolane, that does not require somebody to be computer savvy, all you have to be able to do is pick up a phone. So if they can pick up a phone, if they can use a simple web browser, they can do this. Um, meaning that there will be a computer kiosk either when you come here or if you call here. So both options will make it so that you're not technologically stranded if you're not technologically able.
I think that's what we are two trustees, I think that's what all four trustees want to hear.
Yes, okay, great, we'll make sure that that happens.
Thank you.
Okay, then, is there any other new business? I don't see a need for an executive session, um and is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Page and trustee Robinson, and a real call.
Trustee Page?
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes. Yes. And have a great evening.